I'm calling this meeting to order this evening and we're going to start with our policies. So, Mrs. East, welcome. Good to see you.
Good to see you too. All right, I have no Internet, so it's coming, but I have this paper ready to go. We are going to take a look at JFCA. This is really just non-substantive, very minor revision.
Board members, any comments?
No ma'am. Madam Chair, I move that we approve Policy JFCA as presented on first reading.
I second.
All right, I have a first and a second to approve Policy JFCA on first read. All those opposed, oh, excuse me, all those in favor? Aye.
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 All those opposed? No? Any no's? All right, so we have approved Policy JFCA on first read.
Well, that was East. All righty, we're going to take a look at the next three on the explanation sheet. It's AE, GBAA, and then its sister policy. The policy revisions for these three include a more direct definition of equity as defined by VDOE and in the school board in the last two.
Board members, if I could add to that just for a second. So, you see a revision that happened yesterday and that's in the third paragraph. And there's a reference to being culturally responsive in the environment that we want to provide as a school division. And so, as you know, we're doing a lot of work related to equity and we have teachers who are going through training related to this very important topic and felt that that aligns closely with your equity goals and the work that we're doing as a school division. Then as Ms. East referenced, the top definition comes directly from the Virginia Department of Education, their definition of educational equity.
Board members, any other comments, questions, suggestions?
Yes ma'am, but if somebody else could speak first.
Sure.
I would allow my computer to catch up.
So, I certainly am in favor of culturally responsive. And I know we talked about language there, culturally competent. Culturally responsive means it's sort of a reaction. So, culturally sensitive, culturally supportive, culturally welcoming. There's a lot of different terms that could be used there. So, I wondered if anybody else had any feelings about the best way to express what we know needs to be there.
Right, and I don't think, if I may, Madam Chair, I'm very sorry. Thank you for the time to catch up. But the sentence sort of starts with a responsive environment. So, we're already saying we're responsive. And then it says includes competent, so we're already saying that. So, we wouldn't say culturally competent, and I think it's almost redundant to say culturally responsive.
How about culturally cognizant?
All right, so there's another one, sensitive.
Supportive.
What was the other, the two supportive?
Welcoming.
Cognizant.
Inclusive.
Right.
Culturally inclusive.
I'm not sure what anybody, you know, whether anybody has a strong preference for any of those words.
Saw Dr. Fowler enter the room. Dr. Fowler, any suggestions on that language?
I'm waiting for my computer.
Language is really important and
Yeah.
and we do know that there's so much great work being done. The teachers have always been wonderfully and welcoming to our students. But understanding culture and how it can improve the educational setting is really what we want to emphasize here with just the right word. So.
Maybe aware.
If you'd like, we can come back, Dr. Fowler, while we're looking at that.
Aware was on the tip of my tongue.
Aware, culturally aware.
Culturally aware, aware, supportive, welcoming, responsive. Any else? Can we talk about the next policy while Dr. Fowler is getting her computer up? Do you mind?
Sure. So, we are going to take a look at DJF and KQ together.
I'm sorry, we didn't talk about JFHB and GBAA.
So, these are the two equity policies that also have the definition of equity as defined by VDOE.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Then back to DJF.
All righty, so DJFKQ. These policies are updated to reflect Amendment 22.1-296 and then KQ is 296.1. DJF revision includes the awarding of contracts to service providers who have been convicted of certain crimes. And in KQ, revision includes agreements between the school division and any partner or sponsor to include statements related to convictions of certain crimes.
My only comment on those policies is with DJF, there's a reference to federal code from 1986 when there are more current codes, so that would be certainly something we would look to the SBA to give us some additional guidance why that was chosen over the other. But the other issue is that that particular code from 1986 is also in the Virginia code. It is referenced there, so the Virginia code has not done anything past the 1986 code, federal code. So, this is kind of interesting, something to watch for. As we know, we get recommendations throughout the year. So, board members, would you like to provide a motion for DJF and KQ?
Madam Chair, I move that Policies DJF and KQ be approved on first reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion to approve on first read Policies DJF and KQ and it has been seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor of first read approval, say aye.
Aye.
And if you oppose, respond no. All right, so first read, we're good on those two policies. Ms. East?
All righty, EFB, Food Services. This is, this policy was updated to reflect Amendment of Virginia Code 22.1-79.7 and enactment of Virginia Code 22.1-207.3:1. Their cross-reference was also updated.
It's called the Don't Waste Food.
Yeah.
Is that what it means?
Don't Waste Food policy, thank you, Mr. Roy. But it also says, don't throw away a child's meal, so.
Well, that's.
And, you know, I can't imagine anyone in this division ever doing that. And so, it's sad that that has to be in a policy for someone somewhere.
That didn't make sense.
But it is, so.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Policy EFB as presented on first reading tonight.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve EFB on first read. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, Ms. East?
All righty, we're going to do JO and KNB together. JO, policy updated to reflect Amendment of Virginia Code 64.2-2003. Legal references are also updated. The revision permits school division to disclose pertinent student information data or data to the student's guardian ad litem. And KNB is actually an older policy, but was not previously adopted by Goochlin County School Board. It includes the process to denote children who are missing. Talked with Shawn Campbell, who's in charge of, he's the Power School guru. And we talked about a way that we would market and we're still kind of, he's checking with his state buddies and we're going to figure that out probably some way through Power School to alert.
Right, yes, because this policy stated that you note something in the file, there's some little symbol that you look for.
So, people would be aware if a child was missing and as soon as they're not, it's taken away. So, we're looking for something. If the state needs a report on it, it needs to be marked differently, so that's what he's checking out.
Hope we never have to use it.
Yeah.
I know.
Madam Chair, first, if I may, as the person who's been around on the board for the longest, I am a little shocked that we hadn't caught this before and it certainly was an oversight. There was no intent behind not having this policy previously. So, I just want to state that for the record. And then, if I may, I'd like to make a motion that we approve JO and KNB on first reading tonight.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Policies JO and KNB on first read. All those in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, Ms. East?
And just on a little side note, it is a VSB 2007 policy, so it's pretty old for VSB. So, who knows, it may not have come up.
So, I'm the full responsibility.
I think you're awesome, so. All righty, let's see, we are on to KBA. Policy updated to reflect Amendment of Virginia Code 2.2-3704. The revision includes clarification on the amount of training a FOIA officer receives.
So, it's moved from one to two years and that's just because the standard was lowered?
I don't know the reason for the change, I'm not sure.
But it's a VSB policy, is that, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead, I think it's great.
Okay, but, I mean, it is VSB, so it has to be at least supported by. Okay, thank you.
I am sure that Mrs. Bennett does training every year. We are very fortunate to have an incredible FOIA officer who takes her job seriously for everyone. And so, even though that's the minimum, we'll say. So, I know she, again, she takes us very seriously and she is so knowledgeable on this subject. Thank you, Ms. Bennett.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Policy KBA on first reading tonight.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve Policy KBA on first read tonight and it has been seconded. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving KBA on first read, respond with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, KBA, that's good.
All right, that brings us to our last two before we revisit the three.
Yes.
So, we've got LC and LCF. These policies were updated to reflect Amendment of Virginia Code 22.1-212.6:1. LC was, also reflects 22.1 through three. Basically, revision permits the children of military personnel to enroll in the lottery for charter schools and expands the list of people protected from discrimination. LCF is the revision that expands the list of people protected from discrimination. I know that there was a question whether or not we wanted to add a reference to code. I think it had to do with gender.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so. LCF. Oh, well, it says gender, but not gender identity or the other way around.
It does say gender identity.
Gender identity, where some of the codes say gender and gender identity, so.
Yeah, and I remember this question came up before in another one of our policies and I remember that Ms. Elizabeth Ewing spoke about including pieces of other references. So, not necessarily just that Virginia code, but other references that were out there. So.
As long as we're being inclusive. Thank you for that clarification.
It looks like the form is just, just that one. Okay. Madam Chair, that. Madam Chair, that being the case, I'd like to move that we approve policies LC and LC-F on first reading tonight.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion to approve policies LC and LCF, and it has been seconded to approve tonight on first read. All those in favor, respond with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, so now we're going back. Dr. Fowler, can you come closer? Because I know you've got some brilliant ideas. Not to put you on the spot or anything.
So to be culturally responsive, teachers have to be culturally competent. So I would suggest a responsive environment includes dedicated culturally competent teachers using a variety of techniques and continuing on there. Because we have the word responsive and competent in that sentence already. It's the culturally in front of one of them that is missing.
Alright, let me go to that again. Alright, could you say that one more time?
Absolutely. A responsive environment includes dedicated culturally competent teachers using a variety of techniques and a classroom atmosphere.
Super.
Did someone take that down?
I was gonna say, do you mind copying?
And that's interesting, because we were trying to switch those words around this afternoon.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for pinning that so well. Thank you, perfect.
Just proof that your one head is better than ours.
Thank you. She knows her business. Alright, I'm good with that now. Appreciate that.
So Madam Chair, that being the case, I'd like to propose, or I move, rather, that we approve policy AE as modified on first read.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve policy AE on first read as modified by Dr. Fowler. Thank you so much. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, so I believe we still have, did we approve JFHB?
No.
A, HB, and G?
That I'm aware of. And Madam Chair, I don't see anything of objection to me, and so therefore, I propose that we, or I move, rather than propose, that we approve policies GBAA and JFHB and their inverses on first reading. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve policies JFHB, GBAA, and policy GBAA, JFHB on first read. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Alright.
Wow, thank you so much.
Alright, good to see you.
Thank you. Appreciate your help.
Sure thing.
So now.
Let him run away and take a breath.
We have completed our policy portion of the meeting. That gives us a few minutes before our closed meeting.
Do we have much to cover in there?
Ms. Horn, if the board is okay, I'd recommend that we transition into closed meeting, because there is a lot to discuss in closed session regarding personnel.
Alright, we will now transition to our closed meeting. Ms. Reed, do you have that motion handy?
I move that the Goochlin County School Board convene a closed meeting under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act in order to discuss and consider personnel matters involving the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, discipline, or resignation of employees of Goochlin County Public Schools under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1.
I second that.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All those in favors, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. We are going into closed meeting.
Good evening. We will now transition back into open meeting. The Goochlin County School Board hereby certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Goochlin County School Board. Each board member responds ISO certified when called. Mr. Kataka Chao?
Mr. Newman? Sorry, Mr. Newman?
ISO certified.
Mr. Head?
ISO certified.
Ms. Horn?
ISO certified.
Ms. Barrett agree?
ISO certified.
Ms. Red?
You got it, man. You're good.
There's a whole lot of hats.
Thank you so much. We welcome those citizens present in person and virtually. A special thank you to the GCPS team members who have worked a full day caring for our school division. Good evening to our student representative, who's in my notes, but I don't see Mr. Teague tonight, so I hope that he is doing well. We look forward to your contributions this evening. Hello to our school board clerk, Diane Bennett, who could not be here in person this evening, but we know she's there. Next week is officially School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, and we are so fortunate to have Mrs. Bennett's support every day of the school year. Our next item is our moment of silence. And I ask this evening that all who are able to please stand with us as we pay our respect to the family of Mr. William Quarles through our thoughts and prayers. Thank you. We will now say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, are there any additions or amendments to our agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Our agenda has been, there's a motion that's been passed to approve our agenda as presented. All those in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. The agenda for February 9, 2021 is now approved. I'm going to take a deep breath. Sorry. Okay. Tonight, we are going to be honoring Mr. William E. Quarles Jr. And we are beginning this agenda with an item that none of us could ever have imagined we would need. Our hearts are heavy. Board members and Dr. Rayly, I invite those who wish to speak this evening to do so as we move down the dais.
I probably met Mr. Quarles in, in, in 2012 after I became principal at the high school. He attended many school events. He supported and celebrated all of our students. I knew him as a man who loved the Goochlin community. His work on behalf of all of us demonstrated his love and dedication to helping everyone. His love of his family was equally evident in every conversation we ever had. It was not until November 2019 when we were elected to the school board that I began to know Mr. Quarles as a close friend. We talked often, seemingly every week. In January 2020, a conversation revealed that we both like science fiction movies. So we met at the Short Pump Theater one afternoon and took in a Star Wars movie. It was an awesome mix of our perceptions of our new school board jobs and the galactic issues facing Luke Skywalker. We had a great time. Outside the theater, we exchanged a smile, a handshake, and agreed to meet for another movie. Mr. Quarles was a wonderful friend. I learned a lot from him, as we all did, and I'm very grateful for this past year working with him. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, first off, I'm deeply saddened for William's passing. I've known him for a long time. The word that comes to mind immediately in thinking about William is grace. Grace. He had grace in everything that he did. Every time that you would walk away from him, he would say, "Remember me to your family." He always was thinking of others and putting them first. He always had a gentle manner about him. And he always was somebody who could really light up a room with a smile, and he knew when to use it. He was really, truly, in my mind, a man of grace. And I think, well, I know, I've never met anybody who isn't better for having met him. We do indeed have heavy hearts, and we have big shoes to fill. But my prayers are for his peace and for his family to find some solace and for us to not ever forget him.
Ms. Barrett agree?
Too often, we underestimate the power of a touch, a smile, a kind word, a listening ear, an honest compliment are the smallest act of caring, all of which have the potential to turn a life around. These things that exemplify William Quarles. This seems like an inappropriate time to talk about smiling when we're all in a state of shock, in the process of grieving, and having to deal with mandated wearing of face coverings. However, smiling was William's mantra, and his eyes were always smiling. Peace begins with a smile. A simple smile is the start of opening your heart and being compassionate to others. William's smile was so genuine and inviting. It was a smile that could bring calm and peace to a situation. There are so many accolades for this mild-mannered man. What a pillar of our community he was, but you never knew it when you met him. He was always unassuming, genuine, always cheerful, always purposeful in leading people along in the right path. He was never arrogant, pushy, demanding, noisy, belligerent, or overtly critical. He was always thoughtful, respective, introspective, and polite. I got to know William over the past year when we came onto the school board at the same time. I knew of him and some of his many accomplishments. We became close friends. I found him to be patient, kindly, and willing to teach me about decorum and the expectations as a board member. He accepted the public eye with an ease and grace that set him apart. When I think of William, I think of Smile. And as I tried to come up with a worthy tribute for him, I researched Smile. He always had a smile on his face and was always ready to give it to anyone who needed one. Recently, he was giving interview tips virtually to the CTE students for their upcoming job interviews. And the thing that he emphasized most for them to do during an interview was to smile. There are many varied and diverse quotes related to a smile. In light of the importance William put on smiling, I have selected a few to share here. A smile is the key that locks, that fits the lock of everyone's heart. A smile is the best defense against an offensive world. Mother Teresa said, "Every time you smile at someone, it is an action of love, a gift to that person, a beautiful thing." Use your smile to change the world, but don't let the world change your smile. A smile is the light in the window of your soul that tells others there is a caring, sharing person inside. A smile at the right moment can act like sunlight on a closed-up flower. It may be the turning point for a struggling life. I hope that some of these will give you a reason to pause and reflect on your own smile and how often you share it. Who knew or even thought about the importance of a smile? William did. I believe that our greatest tribute to William Quarles should be to continue to make Goochlin County Public Schools a hallmark for transparency, equity, diversity, and inclusion. Thanks to Dr. Beth Fowler, we are on our way. William thought Dr. Fowler was doing a good job. Goochlin is such an innovative and forward-thinking school division. We can accomplish this goal, not only because it's the right thing to do, but because it will serve as a testament to William's memory and his legacy of public service. If accomplished, it will be a great stepping stone in our pursuit of excellence, allowing us to climb higher. So dear hearts, I challenge you. Go forward in life with a twinkle in your eye and a smile on your face, but with great and strong purpose in your heart. I now reflect on the many words of wisdom that William gave to me, and I think of a Dr. Seuss quote. Don't cry because it's over. Smile because it happened. Dear William, I knew everything was fine when I saw you smile. And oh, hell, I wish I could see your smile now.
We are all better off for having William Quarles in our life. And I've had the pleasure of knowing Mr. Quarles for just four short years. And every time I met him, he'd shake your hand, give you a fist bump, even during these times, a tap on the elbow, and he smiled and always asked how you were doing. The biggest heart and man I've ever, I've ever met. And I am thankful that he has been in my life, and he has made me a better person by knowing him. We've heard Smile so many times this evening, and I've looked at the picture of Mr. Quarles as a member of this board. of Mr. Quarles as a member of this board. It's a beautiful smile. He's standing so tall and proud and just a beautiful smile, and Mr. Quarles had an acronym, Smile. And I remember it, and he said, "Jeremy, the first thing you need to do is you need to seek first to understand and then be understood. And you need to listen." He said, "There's a reason why God gave you two ears and one mouth, and you need to listen more than you talk." And I will tell you, I'll take those lessons through my life forever as a result of what he has shared with me. Mr. Quarles was a peacemaker. He always worked hard to find a way to listen, to understand perspectives, and find a way to bring groups of people together. I have seen it in this room. I've seen it in other settings where he, he did it and did it so masterfully. Graceful, pleasant, full of compassion and peace. He was a true gentle man, and I'll miss him a lot. And so thankful for the opportunity to, to, to experience walking along my path with him, and wish his family nothing but the best during his most challenging times.
Thank you. It is with great sadness that I am speaking about our friend and colleague, Mr. William E. Quarles Jr., and not with him. Mr. Quarles has served the people of Goochlin County in many ways over many years. This service most often included raising up the lives of children and supporting quality education for all. He used a gentle voice in this work, and he was always a gentleman, which I believe was just one example of how he honored his family. As I spoke with each school board member on the night of February the 3rd, we all recall how William really listened before he shared his own thoughts. It was a privilege to collaborate with him. His presence at the dais will be greatly missed. I will always picture a country doctor when I remember Mr. Quarles' nature or nurture. He entered a room with a quiet confidence. I could see that he immediately started gathering data. His smile welcomed and comforted you. He asked questions and provided you the time to speak. He listened. He may provide advice, but in some instances, he took what he heard and learned and began charting a way to make the needed change. Booker T. Washington said, "Those who are happiest are those who do the most for others." Mr. Quarles was a very happy man. My sincere condolences go to his wife Ruth and sons, William and Christopher. We all knew that you were his sunshine. On February 3rd, we all learned another important lesson from Mr. Quarles, one that can guide us to make each day matter for each other, and expressed in these words by Abraham Lincoln. "In the end, it is not the years in your life that count, it's the life in your years." Mr. Quarles, your meetings here on earth are adjourned, but we know that your work will continue through those who will follow your lead. Rest in peace, sir. Matt, would you like to play that? We have a, a beautiful, a beautiful presentation of that smile that you will see through many photos that were shared with us. So let's take a few minutes to look at that, please. Thank you so much. We will now take a five-minute recess to thank our community, community members for being here this evening as Mr. Quarles would want us to do. Thank you. Thank you again, everyone, and thank you for the love that's in the room. That was, that's also a great way to honor Mr. Quarles. So the next item on our agenda is something else very positive. Dr. Rayly, thank you so much for bringing us recognitions this evening.
Well, board members, it is my, my real pleasure to, to recognize the work that you do on behalf of 2,600 students, 468 employees, and over 20,000 residents who rely on you to make decisions about their baby girl and their baby boy and their child getting ready to go to college and anything in between. And it's a tremendous responsibility and a responsibility that no one truly understands unless they have sat in your seat. And I've had the real pleasure of working side by side with you for many, many years now. And the audience, our citizens, they, they don't know the challenges that you have experienced just within the past 12 months. I've, I've shed blood, sweat, and tears with you for the last 12 months, and we have been through a lot together. And from me to you, I cannot thank you enough for standing tall, for being strong, and remaining steadfast on what our school division believes in. You truly believe in maximizing the potential of each and every child whom we serve, regardless of their background, where they're from, or what they do. You, you are board members who are in it for the right reasons, who care about kids, support staff, and want our families to have a wonderful experience. And over the course of the past 12 months, you have adopted two budgets. You have opened schools three times. You have been faced with the loss of a student, and now the loss of a colleague and friend. And it's been tough, but you have remained strong through it all. And as a resident of Goochlin County, as your superintendent, I would just want you to know how much we appreciate what you do. You, you are amazing board members, and this community is lucky to have you representing them as your school board. And I can't thank you enough for what you do for us as staff, the support that you provide for us, the autonomy that you give us, and the ability to support your work day in and day out. And I just want to let you know how much I appreciate that, and thank you on behalf of this community for your tremendous service to us.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Wow.
I have a supporting cast behind me. I believe that we have some of our principal colleagues who also want to share a few remarks on behalf of the school division.
These are from our CTE team.
Thank you, Dr. Rayly.
They're so crafty.
That's awesome.
That is beautiful.
James.
Heck, you can do this stuff.
Very cool.
So I tasked distance learning staff and students to build a one-minute appreciation video, and they did such a fabulous job, they just jumped right into it. It turned into a 10-minute video, so I'm not going to play the whole thing, but I would but I would love to show you just a few bits and pieces. I've worked with you guys for a long time too, and I really enjoy our time together, and I do I will miss Mr. Quarles. He was very good to me all the time. So I appreciate everything that you all do for us and allow us to do what we know is best for kids, especially during these crazy times and unpredictable times, so. Click on the, the slide. Can you hear?
Yeah.
I would like to thank the school board for all you have done to keep me safe in school this year. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, just if you could go to the red pieces too, because the red pieces show echo. So, yeah, so the first one was excellence, and now this is creativity. And just go to slide five and click. So this is artwork from students, and they're showing creativity in the way they present thank you.
That's amazing.
And then the, the last two slides there are from, from our second-grade staff. Yeah, click on the, yeah. And then that next slide. And on the top left.
In this Tyler Pharaoh's class, we read a book called Jabari Jumps about a little boy who showed courage when he was afraid to jump off the diving board for the first time. And then we all drew a picture of a time that we have shown courage and done something that we were afraid to do.
All right, then the next red. And of course, we have the other third, uh, first grade teachers as well, the third grade. And maybe 14. These are sticky notes that they've, they put on a jam board. Now, fourth grade, they were rocking it, they made this huge video. Maybe just play just maybe one or two slides.
Are you going to share this with us so that we can watch this at home? It's way better than television.
It's, it is shared on the agenda. So you should be able to pull it up and look at all of the pieces. And maybe the top, top, whatever one, pick up, pick any of them. Pick top left, I guess.
things that I've learned now with my iPad. So, thank you.
Nice.
Thank you so much.
Maybe that last slide, just so you can see their names are up there.
Wow.
I'll tell you what, the elementary distance learning team is amazing.
Thank you. This is incredible. Oh, that has all the elementary schools. Cute. So much.
Now, this.
Oh, my goodness. I love hearing from our students. That is just amazing. Oh, my goodness. Thank you.
Wow. Better than Christmas.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so inside each of the packages that I just gave you is a framed quote by the now very famous poet that we were introduced to during the inauguration and at the Superbowl, Amanda Gorman. And it, and it reads, "For there is light, if only we're brave enough to see it, if only we're brave enough to be it." So, on behalf of the staff at RES during a most difficult year, thank you for being our light.
Thank you.
Wow. Wow. Hi, guys.
Hello.
Thank you just really isn't enough for, for everything that you do, for our strong community of Goochlin. It takes a strong, it takes strong schools to make a strong community, and you devote so much of your time to ensure that we have everything we need to reach every single one of our students. Thank you for your steadfast commitment for our students, their families, and our staff members. Your efforts make a difference in the lives of all of our school families and all the residents of Goochlin County. You are so appreciated. At the end of our instructional presentation, we have a little more appreciation, so it's coming.
Awesome. I'm going to play a video from Bird.
That's pretty long.
Hey, this is from Gabby.
Oh.
Somewhere over the rainbow, we are high. And the dreams that you dream of once in my life. Don't cry. Hi, oh, somewhere over the rainbow, bluebirds fly. And the dreams that you dream of, you will do. Someday you wish you could start with the windows are far behind. Be where trouble comes like lemon drops, high above the chimney cup that's where you find me. Oh, somewhere over the rainbow, bluebirds fly. And the dreams that you did too, oh, why, oh, why can't I? Hi, well, I see trees of green and red roses too. I'll watch the blue fall, me and you in the deep to myself. What a wonderful world. Glass skies of blue and icy, clouds of white in the brightness of day. I like the dark in the deep to myself. What a wonderful world. The colors of the rainbow, so pretty in the sky, I hope so on the faces of people passing by. See friends shaking and saying, "How can't I do?" They really say, "I, I love you." I hear babies crying, I'm lost and blue, they run much more than we all know.
Awesome.
Good evening. Hello from GMS. We truly would like to thank you for being the calm, being our consistent through a year, which we are referring to at GMS as the paradise, or the pandemic paradise, where things just keep changing, the hits keep coming. But you all, you model compassion, grace, and you approach things with such a steady hand that it really, it's really appreciated. And, and the trust that you have amongst everyone throughout this county is, is to be commended. So, thank you so much for your leadership and for, for sometimes stepping into that, that brave pot that no one really wants to step into sometimes. So, so we wanted to thank you. Each department at Goochlin Middle School put together something little for you, and then you're, in your email tomorrow, you'll have another little treat as well for you to look through. But, um, thank you, you are appreciated.
Thank you. My goodness.
And I always have the pleasure of running cleanup, right? So, all the great things that would have been really innovative are great to say. I, I don't have any, but I will say this. I echo all the sentiments, but Ms. Potter just brought up trust, and I think it's not just the trust that our community has in you, but the trust you place in us and allowing us to do our jobs and allowing us to have courage in the way we approach things. And so, I'll just say this, I, I feel blessed to work with each and every single one of you all. I know that Mr. Quarles is not here this evening, but he's here in spirit. And one of the things I said earlier, and I, I know we, we honored, honored him quite a bit, but I want to do it one more time, is I think he would be really proud of the work that we did in that base meeting the other night that Ms. Horn you attended. I joked with him being there, and I think that for that to be one of his last experiences here in Goochlin County, I think he'd be proud of that, the work we're doing. So, he will be missed, and, and we love him, and we, you know, wish well his family and offer them the condolences. But this is your night for celebration, and so we have athletics in Goochlin, and it's happening, and we had a successful season.
Yeah.
I don't care what happened last night, that was our game, but I don't care what happened. We have athletics because of your courage, and our students are better for it. And so, we have some gear for you to wear, and I'll tell you, we, we need some additional administrators on, on staff for games, so if you want to stop in, we've got some gear for you to wear and help support and do some of the work for some live events. So anyhow, some Goochlin gear here for you, a pullover, a couple of t-shirts, and then some sweet treats in there that you can wear when you come to see some of our live sporting events.
Go Bulldogs!
Thank you all for your support. Go Bulldogs!
Absolutely.
Wow. Thank you all for the amazing words and the smiles. Were very appropriate in all the videos with our, with our other words this evening.
Awesome.
And the people that we saw are people that are changing lives every day, and, and we, we appreciate you so much. I mean, you do the real, real work every single day, and it's just, it's phenomenal. And the lives that you're changing are going to be sitting, somebody is going to be sitting up here in the future. So, thank you for creating our future leaders and the people who will, will keep our county moving and, and other parts of our country. So, we appreciate you. So, thank you. We have more?
We, we do, and board members, next on the agenda is a recognition of what Ms. Horn has referenced earlier this evening, and that is our school, school board clerk, who many don't know, really is, has a tremendous responsibility in making sure that all the many, many compliance issues, all the organization, all of the stuff that nobody ever sees, really, happens on Diane Bennett's desk. And so, we are very grateful to have a talented and successful school board clerk to, to support our work day in and day out. And so, I, I know what she does for me on a daily basis and supports the work of the board, and just publicly want to thank Diane for the great work on behalf of the school division, and so recognizing her as well during the school board clerk appreciation week.
Give her a round of applause.
Yes, ma'am, we may. Okay, so excellence, courage, creativity, honor, and optimism. I've said this before, I will say it again, that if you cut the veins open of a Goochlin County public school employee, hashtag echo is going to jump out. It's, it's, it's who we are, it's what we do, it's embedded in our DNA, and actually, it's what we look for when we hire our staff to be a, come a part of our team. And so, we're going to honor 12 of our colleagues this evening who have exemplified hashtag echo in their daily work in the school division, and Dr. Armstrong's going to introduce us to them this evening.
Wow. This is better than the Dirty Dozen then, right?
Yes, we, we had many nominations. Thank you, Mr. C. And I do want to preface this, for those of you who are watching at home, we had a ton of nominations, and if you were nominated and you didn't get it, it's not any statement about who you are, it's just that we simply didn't have the time to recognize everybody. But this is a year where we could easily recognize every single individual who puts on the badge right now. So, the Echo Award is, I mean, it's a, it's a great honor, but I think everyone deserves some, some love this year. So, here are your February Echo Award winners. We're going totally virtual, I've created a slide for every one of our winners, let's go ahead and get into it. With Ms. Carmen Bland at GES is the school counselor, was nominated by Libby Routson for optimism and excellence. Mrs. Bland has jumped right in, this is her first year, like she's been there forever. She has gone above and beyond to teach both in-person and virtually, she has assisted teachers, counseled students, and keeps car duty running smoothly. Mental health is more important than ever, and she helps students learn to handle all the changes, and that is her top priority. She has helped virtual students, Ms. Routson's especially, via lunch bunch, as well as Ms. Routson's own child, to navigate her emotions while learning during a pandemic. She is positive, helpful, kind, and recognizes students weekly for their kindness, and we are very happy to have Mrs. Bland on our team in GCPS in that Goochlin Elementary School. So, let's give her a quick hand. Ann Taylor Britton, part of our amazing school nurse team, was nominated by Mr. Andy Myler for her excellence, courage, honor, and optimism. Ms. Britton has gone above and beyond anything that could be written in a school nurse's job description. Her ability to work with staff and families about every health-related issue is impressive. She understands that so much of the current situation is still new to many, but she has tough discussions when needed and maintains professionalism in every case. Let's give her a big hand. Another new addition to the GCPS family this year is Stephanie Cooper, an instructional assistant at Bird Elementary School. She was nominated by Megan Donovan for her optimism and courage. Mrs. Cooper jumped right into being an instructional aide in my classroom and many other classrooms this year. This is her first year working in a school system, and she has done a remarkable job. Mrs. Cooper always has a smile on her face, even in the most frustrating of situations. She does an amazing job reading the students and working with them appropriately, reading the students and reading to them. I, I think she meant both of those things, which are both skills you need in that job. Mrs. Cooper has been a blessing to me and the students that she serves. So, congratulations, Mrs. Cooper, let's give her a hand.
Mrs. Jennifer Dunn, second grade out at Randolph Elementary School, nominated by a colleague from a different school and a parent, Mr. Jay Sykes, for her excellence and courage. On Friday, the 8th, we were asking our son, William, about his day. This is Mr. Sykes. We were listening for the usual daily things that make his class great. He informed us that his teacher at RES saw one of his classmates choking at lunch. Mrs. Dunn rushed to the student and performed the high-look maneuver on the student. When she performed this maneuver, she cleared the obstructed airway, thus saving the student's life. I'm very proud of Mrs. Dunn and the impact she has left on my son, so bravo to her, and let's give her a hand. Over at GMS, Mrs. Emily Ferguson was nominated by Erin Wulder for her excellence. Emily Ferguson epitomizes what Echo stands for. Not only has she adapted to all of the instructional changes this year with grace and dignity, she has continued to nurture relationships with students as well. You can see the love she has for her kids every day and vice versa. Students who have not always loved English now enjoy it because of her creativity and compassion. Emily has also been coaching volleyball at the girls' middle, for the girls at the middle school and now the high school team, and is a role model for all girls by stressing teamwork while building self-confidence. Mrs. Ferguson has done all this while raising her beautiful baby boy, Carter, at home, and has gone above and beyond to deserve this award. Congratulations.
Ashley Hall, another new addition to our team in central office, and this came from Demetri Harris, but may as well be from everyone who works with her in central office. I see a lot of head shaking right now from the folks in this room. Ashley was nominated for her excellence and optimism. Demetri says that she began taking on HR overflow work almost immediately. It was evident that she had the capacity to take on more. Even before she became a permanent full-time member of the team, she had become an integral part of our work. She has quickly learned the ins and outs of the HR process, the new financial management system, and has been quick to volunteer to independently manage parts of the process while always being willing to help anyone out or any department who needs an extra set of hands. She takes initiative, she asks clarifying questions, she's prompt, there is no doubt she's productive, but she also works equally hard to build positive relationships with her colleagues, and she is a shining example of excellence and optimism demonstrated by GCPS, and we are lucky to have her. So, give her a big hand.
Another face, a lot of heading out in here for Mrs. Emily Hannah, the health and PE teacher out of Randolph Elementary School. I have seen her in person, too, in, in action, and does an amazing job there. She was nominated by Jen Gates for her excellence and optimism, and she has been a shining light for staff and students at Randolph this year. She's always been able, been able to bring a smile to the faces of staff and students. She's encouraging, kind, and filled with contagious energy. This year, we have needed all those characteristics in the midst of teaching during the pandemic, and Emily does so much more than PE. You see her walking around with a spray bottle, hitting doorknobs, and she never, you talk about smiling, always with a smile on her face. So, congratulations, Emily, let's give her a big hand.
Morgan Noonie was nominated by both Stacy Pound and Andy Myler for excellence, creativity, optimism, and courage. Ms. Pound says she is a team player in every sense of the word, works tirelessly to support everyone at every level, from technology to instruction to coaching, to coach at times. She is approachable, funny, and just a pillar in the BES family. She's always willing to lend a helping hand and step in where needed, whether that's subbing and head start, leading a virtual lesson, or planning an impromptu PD session. She has played an integral part in helping to engage families at BES and has been just doing a fantastic job all the way around. Mr. Myler says that she has been supporting teachers in every manner possible. Technology assistance has been her primary area of support, but she has done far more, including substituting in classrooms and student assistance, and she has done all of this without question or hesitation. She has been invaluable at BES, let's give her a hand.
Josh Rook, Spanish teacher, nominated by Christina Whitfield over at GHS for his excellence, creativity, courage, honor, and optimism. Throughout virtual and hybrid teaching, Josh has exemplified creativity as he has had to try to find new ways for his students to be successful and engaged on a daily basis. He has investigated new digital tools, developed ways to track student learning, and modeled for his colleagues how to get 90 minutes of instruction into a 60-minute block this year. Josh is courageous and optimistic as he supports his colleagues throughout his department and throughout the division by encouraging them to try new and different things in their classroom. He has taken initiative to offer PD sessions for teachers in the area of student engagement and mindfulness, not just at GHS, but division-wide. I've gotten his emails myself. Despite the difficult tasks that has been put in front of teachers this year, he has remained optimistic with every twist and turn we have had. He finds a way to express the positivity associated with these changes instead of facing changes and difficult tasks with a negative viewpoint, and that's a very distinguishing trait of Josh, and I see that as well. We are proud to be here in GCPS, working with the amazing teachers like Josh Rook every day. Congratulations, Mr. Rook.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for the amazing words and the smiles. Were very appropriate in all the videos with our, with our other words this evening. And the people that we saw are people that are changing lives every day, and, and we, we appreciate you so much. I mean, you do the real, real work every single day, and it's just, it's phenomenal. And the lives that you're changing are going to be sitting, somebody is going to be sitting up here in the future. So, thank you for creating our future leaders and the people who will, will keep our county moving and, and other parts of our country. So, we appreciate you. So, thank you. We have more?
We, we do, and board members, next on the agenda is a recognition of what Ms. Horn has referenced earlier this evening, and that is our school, school board clerk, who many don't know, really is, has a tremendous responsibility in making sure that all the many, many compliance issues, all of the organization, all of the stuff that nobody ever sees, really, happens on Diane Bennett's desk. And so, we are very grateful to have a talented and successful school board clerk to, to support our work day in and day out. And so, I, I know what she does for me on a daily basis and supports the work of the board, and just publicly want to thank Diane for the great work on behalf of the school division, and so recognizing her as well during the school board clerk appreciation
Sarah Smith, the librarian, virtual teacher, utility person of all hats at Goochlin Elementary School, was nominated by Ashby Pond for her excellence. She continues to be an anchor in the success we have had as a fifth-grade team and has shifted with each change with great fortitude. The success we have in the classroom is directly impacted by the service she provides to our virtual students, and Sarah is an example of excellence in her versatility and resilience in the face of change, and her work is an inspiration to our entire building. So, congratulations, Sarah. I know the GES folks, and I'm their help. Another, we got several GES faces here tonight. Katie Sprazio was nominated by Ally Olbridge and Kaylee McDonough for her Echo Award, which includes all five for her nomination, excellence, creativity, courage, honor, optimism. Ms. Olbridge says that over the past year, Katie has gone above and beyond for the division, her team, and her students. She has had to switch classrooms numerous times throughout the year, communicate and collaborate with staff from three different elementary schools, and create lessons and activities that are virtually engaging. She's accepted all of these challenges with positivity, grace, and flexibility, and has shown what it means to be a leader. Her hard work and dedication to her profession and students is something to be celebrated and recognized, and Mrs. McDonough says that she has dedicated her time to collaborate with both her virtual and in-person teams and has gone above and beyond for those teams to ensure our students are getting the most out of their learning. Congratulations, Ms. Sprazio. Another GES face, Amanda Steely, nominated by one of our new teachers, Ms. Kendra Liggins, one of her colleagues at GES, for her courage and optimism. And Kendra nominated Amanda for her work in spearheading some scholarship efforts that we're going to be working on together to really work with our current students who are going to be coming back in our Grow Your Own programs, specifically working to recruit more teachers of color here in Goochlin County Public Schools. Amanda has been leading that effort on the teacher's side, and we're combining forces now as we move forward to roll that out. She always has a positive attitude and is willing to lend a helping hand to students and staff, and she has made me feel, most importantly, very welcomed here at GES. So, Amanda is a great advocate for all of our teachers and especially for our newbies out at Goochlin Elementary School. Congratulations, Mrs. Steely. And her poor husband is gone every morning at like 4:00, putting salt down on lots, and she's still doing all that. So, good for her. Meredith Wilkinson, one of our wonderful school psychologists, was nominated by Amanda Steely, who we just saw, for her courage and optimism. Mrs. Steely says that Ms. Wilkinson demonstrates courage and optimism by supporting the students, teachers, and families in a behind-the-scenes way that allows others to shine. She brings a wealth of knowledge and strategies to the table when supporting even our most challenging students, and her attention to detail ensures that we use safety as our guide, and her mentorship and collaboration over the past few years have been foundational to my personal growth. Congratulations, Mrs. Wilkinson. And our last Echo Award is Dr. Jennifer Wagner, pictured here with her own children, because she sees once in a while nowadays, Caroline Wilson. She was nominated by the nurse team, the team of Duffy, Mullins, Usry, Britton, and Short for all five of our core values. They are beyond grateful for her work to keep our faculty, staff, and students safe. She does not have a medical background, but because, it's the world we live in, but because she is in charge of our ragtag group, their words, not mine, she became the point of contact for all things COVID. She has established a relationship with the Chickahominy Health District, learned about the virus, contact tracing, public health, and supported us day in, day out. We recognize her, and we promise you, the success in our fight against COVID in schools is because of her leadership. I totally agree with that. So, congratulations, Dr. Wagner. And despite our good-natured back-and-forth sometimes, Dr. Wagner and I, she is one of the smartest and hardest-working people I've ever seen. So, congratulations, and I'm not joking around with you on that. I really mean it. There's your Echo Awards for February. Thank you.
Wow. I'm blown away. Those of you who know me know I love quotes, and I just pulled one up that I have in my notebook. "Great things are done by a series of small things brought together." All those people and all of our staff do that every single day, so thank you so very much. Dr. Rayly, announcements and reminders are next.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Horn. Yes, we do have, this is a busy time of year for our school division with a lot of meetings and events that are taking place, and they are all listed for the public to see on their agenda, including recognizing our career in technical educators in our school division, recognizing the contributions of African-Americans now and in the past, and, you know, recognizing the great contributions of those individuals in our history. And we're going to learn a little bit more about the continued work that we're doing related to that in our school division reports later on tonight. We also recognize the contributions of counselors. Virginia Kindness Week is next week, as well as, we'll see what Monday holds. And while we have the public here this evening, a reminder that at this time, Friday is a scheduled instructional makeup day, and we'll see what happens at 4:00 in the morning on Friday, and that may determine what happens on Friday. If we do, in fact, miss another day of school, that Monday will be an instructional day for students, and so, we'll see what happens on Monday. I will be back in this room on the 22nd of February for a school board meeting, and recognizing that next month is Equity and Education Month, and you're going to hear from Dr. Fowler about some of that this evening as well. And then, your next regularly scheduled meeting is March 9th, with a joint town hall taking place on the 23rd of March. So, a lot of things are happening in our school division in the coming weeks.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. All right. Moving on in our agenda. This evening's agenda includes an executive summary of the budget that Dr. Rayly presented to this board in our community on January 26, 2021, after months of collaborating with all stakeholders to include our board of supervisors. I will now open a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2122 budget to hear your questions, concerns, comments, and maybe even a few hallelujahs. Public hearing is open. Is there anyone that wishes to speak that is present? And is there anyone online, or did we receive any emails?
Nothing.
Nothing. All right. We'll give them a few minutes, see if anybody, do we have the ability for people to call in this evening?
No, nothing's streaming.
Okay. All right, very good. All right. Well, it's close.
The shortest public hearing ever.
Wow. And I think that is because of the great work that has been done for this budget and for the people that this budget will serve. So, thank you. I will call an end to our public hearing, seeing no movement. All right. We are now, yes? We are now at item 13, which is public comment period. And at this time, if there are any citizens who wish to speak on any concerns, we welcome you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. I would like to go on record also to acknowledge and honor Mr. Qualls, who was a personal friend, and his contribution to the education, and he was a board member before school board member, you know. So, I'll miss him along with everyone else. And I want to acknowledge School Board Member Appreciation Week. I was a school board member for five years in upstate New York at the Berkshire Farm Center and Union Free School District. So, I can identify, when I say I know what you're going through, I was a school board member, so I know what you're going through. I want to talk about a subject that is sensitive, not only to me, but to students and the community. Dylan Roof was 20 years old, and he embraced the Confederate flag, a symbol of violence, hate, and intimidation. And in that embrace, he went on to murder nine church members and injure so many others. I never thought I would see the Mississippi State flag without the Confederate battle flag. And we all know how horrific it was to see the Confederate flag in the halls of Congress. So, why are we tolerating the Confederate flag image in the halls of Goochlin Public Schools? It is, I've been told that it is acceptable for students to wear Confederate T-shirts, images of that Confederate flag on the T-shirts because it was not disruptive. And I think that's a pretty low bar. The black students brought this to the attention of Dr. Rayly, I think, last July, and they were concerned about it. It is in their families and the black community. It is not a welcoming environment for a, it is not a welcoming environment for not only black teachers and students, but other diverse groups and many other people who are not part of that diverse group. Times are changing. Lee Davis is near Hanover School, High School, and I don't think they displayed that Confederate flag. So, my request is that you find a way to not tolerate it, to discourage it, to ask students not to wear it. There's a high school in California, Whitley High School, near Bakersfield. The principal saw the image of the Confederate flag on a truck, and he went berserk, sort of. He wrote to all the parents, at least he told the drivers of the truck, students, that would not be tolerated. He wrote to the parents, and he called an assembly to tell the students that that would not be tolerated. I know there's a legal aspect, but free speech has consequences. If the school system wants the cooperation of the black community, and I understand that there is a three-year initiative to have a special project for advancing the students and engaging the black community, there has to be a knowledge or understanding that that's a contradiction, to say it's all right to have a Confederate flag in the halls, but we want to help you. So, whatever policies can be put forth, whatever influence can be put forth, it would be appreciated if that symbol would be eliminated in the schools. And if I could just have one minute on black history. I understand that the state school board has changed the curriculum or suggested change, and I certainly salute that because it is a big improvement. Basically, they are expanding what they already are teaching, which is a step forward. My only request is that in some way, you could bring in visitors or find a way to teach not only the black students, but all of the students, that there's a history and heritage beyond enslavement. Basically, the curriculum teaches enslavement, segregation, Jim Crow, and the heroes of the black and white community in terms of how that's been overcome. But I don't think our students, all students, can be made fully whole until they know that there was a history in life beyond the shores of America and beyond enslavement. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. I know that we will continue this conversation with you specifically and with the community, so I appreciate your words this evening. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak this evening on anything? All right. Thank you. Public comment period is now closed. We will move on to item 14, which is the consent items.
Madam Chair, I would prefer, if we could, to pull out items 14E and F and then address the rest of the consent agenda as a slate. So, therefore, I move that we take items 14A, B, C, and D as a slate.
Thank you. All right. I have a motion to pull A, B, C, D as one group to approve, and then we will address items E and F separately. Is there a second? All right. All those in favor of the consent items being done in groups, respond with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. So, we are looking at consent items A through D. Is there any, are there any questions, or is there any discussion on these items? All right.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve as presented.
All right.
Second.
All right. So, items A through D, board members, we have a motion to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. We will now look at consent item E, budget supplements and categorical transfers.
Madam Chair, in addition to the other items on the consent agenda, I move that the Goochlin County School Board accept the $661,240 county transfer for staff bonuses and approve the categorical transfers and budget supplement to the school board fiscal year 2021 budget for the identified categories and amounts, and transmit this information to the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors for their appropriation.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And as I'm supposed to repeat that back, I'm going to, I am going to say that Mr. Newman has made an impressive motion to approve item 14E. And is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody respond with aye? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Item E is approved. Item F, Apple iPad purchases and sole source notification.
Madam Chair, I move that in addition to the other items on the consent agenda, the school board approved the purchase of 350 iPads and cases from Apple Proposal 2206913089, and that there is only one source practically available for to provide Apple iPads, and that source is Apple Incorporated.
Madam Chair, I second that.
Thank you. Again, we have another impressive motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'm just excited that we are going to be putting in the hands of the amazing students who we see know way better than I how to operate an iPad. So, thank you, thank you, Mrs. White, for putting this forward and for the technology team putting all this together for our students. So, all those in favor of the motion as presented by Mrs. Barefoot Reed, respond by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right. We are finished with the consent items for this evening, and we are back to Dr. Rayly.
Thank you, Mrs. Horn. I guess a few things real quick, and these are off the agenda, but I neglected to mention that we are offering the SAT at Goochlin High School in March, and this is part of our overall equity initiatives where we're trying to provide more access and opportunity to students. In the past, you had to go to In the past, you had to go to Henrico County or where else to take that SAT. This is the second time we've offered that SAT in our own community. So really excited and thank Dr. Stacy Reinbold for organizing all of that. In addition to that, board members, you have at your spot our Goochlin Reads book for this year. And if you go into our elementary schools, you're walking into a jungle, so be careful. You never know what's going to jump out and get you. But really excited about this opportunity to have us all on the same page, reading the same book, and it's really fostered some great conversations with our kids. And you might not believe it, but our elementary principals are pretty good actors and actresses, too. So kind of impressive. So we have a lot of fun with this, and I wanted to get you your book so that you could join us in the reading. Legislative update, we have now gone through crossover where the bills passed in Senate or in the House, and the House bills are in the Senate. And I'll tell you where this was supposed to be a short session. There has been a lot of action related to education, and I encourage the community to pay attention to what's happening in Richmond because there are legis, there is legislation that could have significant impact on us. And unfortunately, some of that legislation takes away local control from local school boards, which is something that this board has felt strongly about. And so we are monitoring that closely. I can tell you on behalf of the school division, I have advocated against some of these bills because I think that it, there are certainly concerns related with some of them specifically. Again, those that take away local control from local school boards. I am advocating on the division's behalf related to the definition of spectators for Executive Order 72 and have petitioned our local delegation to support our advocacy with the governor so that we can provide more opportunities for our families to see their student athletes play in person. And I believe that that is getting some positive traction, at least in the House of Delegates, and hopeful that we can get some movement on that so we can have more of our families be there to see their student athletes and their band and their cheerleaders and everybody involved in our extracurriculars so that we can hopefully have some more opportunities there. We hope to learn a little bit more about the House budget and the Senate budget, hopefully tomorrow maybe, as we extend into the special session. So a lot is happening. Ms. Horn has shared some comments with me related to that. And board members, I encourage you to stay tuned to what the Virginia School Board Association is publishing. They do a nice job of summarizing all of that, but it's important for all of us as citizens to stay actively engaged and follow what is happening because it does have a direct impact on what happens in this local school division. This is Black History Month, and you see linked to your agenda specifically activities that are going to happen this month. But I will say that in this school division, Black History Month is not just one month. It is, we honor the contributions of African-Americans in our past and current history on a daily basis. You have seen in some of the video this evening how we are working on diversifying our curriculum, working on diversifying the curricular resources available to students through literature. Dr. Fowler is going to talk a little bit more about that this evening, recognizing the board's equity goals that you have established and our continued work towards that. We still have work to do. There is no doubt about it. We are working on a great trajectory. There is a lot of positive momentum to ensure that we are providing a welcoming experience to our students, but we still do have work to do. And we're committed to that work and want to be able to provide a highlight of some of that when Dr. Fowler presents this evening. But those activities specifically taking place this month are linked to your agenda. And then the last thing I want to do is I'm going to come forward and give you an update on where we are right now with some of our school metrics and some other data points. Thank you, sir. All right. So there is some deja vu, and you're going to see some of the similar graphics that you've seen now since August. But I wanted to stray a little bit from the script a little bit and bring us back to our strategic plan and what we have established as important goals for our school division and focus specifically on the first objective and what we want to accomplish for our students. And that's making sure that every student, all students, not just some, not just the ones over here, over there, up there, all students experience high levels of growth, engagement, and personalization. I want to show you how we are working towards accomplishing that goal. And so, as you know, we have dipped our toe in the water and we have surveyed our staff, our kids, and our families on a regular basis, most recently at the end of January, to tell us how things are going. What's your experience like? What's it like to be a student, a staff member, a family member? And so we continue to get great participation in this survey. We had over, you know, 1,100 individuals who responded to this survey. And as I show you the distribution, we had most of our students. The vast majority of respondents were from our students. And so what is most meaningful to me as we look at this data is if we are grounded in the student experience, if that is the reason why we exist, you can see from this data that our students are having a great experience. And so it's a pretty good distribution of folks and about 50/50 in respondents who are experiencing the in-person setting and the remote learning setting. So I think it's a valuable data set, one that we can generalize to the greater population, and I think is reliable. And so this is that distribution of who responded. And as I have noted, we had a lot of students respond, over nearly 600 students responded to this most recent survey. And then overall, board members, you know, we asked two questions of folks. Number one, how's your, how's your experience been? And we asked them to rate it either it's been better than I thought it was going to be, as good as I thought it was going to be, or worse than I thought it was going to be. And so in this graphic, green and blue are good. And you can see a lot of green and a lot of blue. So it varies by school, and you can see overall, our students, our staff, and our employees are having a very positive experience with what we are doing as a school division. And so this tracks those results over time. You can see where we started, and we were really proud of where we were in early September. We're like, yes, 82, we got it. And you can see now we're at 92. Overall, we have 92% of our respondents who are having a positive experience with this school division. And I shared with leadership earlier this week. I said, if you were to walk out of Disney World and do an exit survey of people who are in the happiest place on earth, you'd be lucky if you got 92% acceptance because somebody would say the lines are too long or the food wasn't any good, or this happened here. And we're doing this in the midst of a pandemic, something we've never, ever experienced before. So we, as a school division, have great pride in what we're able to do and the experiences that we're providing for folks, and we should be very proud of these results. Ask this in the second question. Tell us about your experience. Was it terrible, poor, good, or excellent? And so again, green and blue are good, and there's a lot of green and blue. We still, again, have work to do. I don't like some of that red and yellow. So what we have done is we had individuals say, if you want us to contact you, put your information in the survey. And principals have had individual conversations with those folks. And so it goes to the level of customer service that we're providing to our community because even those folks who are having a terrible experience, we want to find out why and work together with what we can do to make it a more positive experience. And we're certainly committed to that. And again, you can see how our numbers have risen over time where we are at the highest levels ever. And so 86% of our folks are having either an excellent or good experience with our school division. And again, something for us all to be extremely, extremely proud of. And what's interesting, we dug in a little bit more and we looked at our in-person learners versus our distance learners, and there's a little bit of discrepancy between that. But overall, you can see that kids are having a better experience now than they were at the beginning of the year. And that's the positive takeaway associated with this graphic here. And so as Dr. Collier said, there are school divisions who made the choice for their community for students not to participate in extracurricular activities. And as we opened schools, we remained committed to providing students those opportunities. And we should be very proud of what we were able to do. We had wrestling. We had basketball. We had cheerleading. We had all of the traditional winter sports in Goochlin. And so our students were able to get out there and support their fellow teammates. They were able to share their voice. They were able to do what kids are supposed to do. And you know what? We were safe doing it. We wore masks during practice. We washed our hands when we walked in the gym, washed our hands when we walked out. We were sanitizing basketballs, and we had an overall very, very successful winter sports program. And we're now transitioning into the traditional fall sports. So just love these pictures. Our kids are doing what kids are supposed to be doing even during these most challenging times and appreciate the courage that our school division has exerted during this time. Looked at a motion. We had swimmers in the pool. We had wrestlers. We had cheerleaders. We did it all. And so I'm thankful for our families who supported our student athletes during this time. They didn't, they didn't get the full experience. They weren't able to watch their students perform in person with the exception of senior night. But at least they got to play. There are some students that did not get that experience at all. So proud of what we're able to do for our folks. So updated health data. And you have heard in the media regarding what is being stated by the CDC. You heard the governor's conversation last week. And so I thought that this graphic was perfect, and it's based on research. And essentially, it says that the best place for kids are in school. And we know that, and that's why we made the decision in early October for students to come back to school five days a week in person for our preschool through five students. And we have students who are in person, grade six through 12, and we've been doing that since November. But as we have seen in our data, we have not had an outbreak. The cases that we have experienced have happened outside in the community. They have not happened in our school. And so based on data, the best place for students to be are inside the school building. I bring us back to this graphic because this is what we look at whenever we're faced with making difficult decisions. And board members, to this date, we have not had an outbreak. At this point in time, we are still able to meet the staffing needs of our school division, and there have not been any other unforeseen circumstances that have impacted what we've done. I talked to a faculty today, and a teacher said to me, you know, we're really hitting our stride. We're in a groove. And you know, we haven't changed things up. We haven't changed anything, even during some data that you will see where we had spikes. You know, if you look at some data points on other websites, there's a lot of red in some of those places, even here. But we stayed true. We remained committed to distancing, masking, washing hands. Students have stayed in school, and we've been able to get the experience data that you've seen. So wanted to bring us back to that. Cases continue to rise, as we know. This graph is just a little bit different because there has been some cases that have happened at the local correctional facility. So you see that little increase there as well. And these are the daily cases. Everyone received calls from me pretty much on a daily basis from November through January. But you know what? You haven't received as many calls recently. And so things are improving in our community, and we're not seeing the cases that are happening in our schools. And so what you're hearing about nationally is reflected in our local data as well. Number of cases that we experienced in, of course, November after Thanksgiving was a little spike. So was the post-Christmas holiday. Nothing unique or different in our data, but we stayed the course. We had kids in school. We didn't have an outbreak. Students were safe, and we're able to continue with our instructional plan. An update on this, and there was recognition this evening of Dr. Jennifer Wagner. I also want to publicly recognize Ms. Demetra Harris. I get to see what these folks do every day. I know the hours that they dedicate to that. And when Dr. Armstrong said, there's Dr. Wagner and she's with her kids, she and Ms. Harris have sacrificed a lot of time for their family. Nights, weekends, Saturdays and Sundays, scheduling appointments for our employees, coaching and counseling folks to help them understand and navigate the complex world of vaccines. And our school division is very lucky to have them leading our efforts. You can see that we had 72% of our employees who wanted the vaccine. 28% chose not to, and that certainly is their personal choice, and we respect that. And so as of today, we have had a lot of folks who have received the first dose of their vaccine. And by February the 13th, which is Saturday, all of our interested employees will have received their first dose. And employees already have received notification about next week and getting the second dose. So by the end, by mid-March, I fully expect that all of our employees who want the vaccine will have had both their first and their second dose. So that's a monumental effort in a small school division with staff that are wearing multiple hats. But we've done it. We've collaborated with regional partners, and it's been a success. So again, a public shout out to those two who have led the way for us. This is some staffing data, and board members, you see some spikes there. There were times when we had 14 individuals who are out of one school. We pulled some folks out of central office, and we went and substitute taught in those classrooms, and we made it work. You know the stories about our transportation and our food service teams where we've had to empty those spaces and backfill with other folks. Again, we stayed the course. We've kept students in school. We have not had an outbreak, and we've been able to run our school division effectively, even in the midst of some challenges. It's our team. Everybody's picking up the pieces, pulling together, and helping out where they can to make sure that students have the experiences that we've come to expect. Not a whole lot of change. Board members, we have just a handful of situations that we're working through from a staffing standpoint. But by and large, this has not been an issue for us for the past several months. And again, showing that data graphically, we're able to meet our staffing demands at this point in time. I will say publicly that we need to monitor what may happen with the second dose of the vaccine. And we do not know what will happen with our workforce. The possibility may exist that side effects are experienced by our employees, and we may not be able to empty the bench and fill the void. And should that time come, we may have to, you know, go to a situation where we have an asynchronous day or two or three, depending on what may be happening with the vaccine. And so we're very well aware of that as a staff. But at this point in time, there's many unknowns. We may have students who have some side, I mean, some staff who have side effects, and we may not. But we are aware that that is a potential issue, and we'll be prepared to react if we need to. So anyway, the positive is that we will have that second dose and we'll figure out any sort of side effects if we have to. So great data, board members. Again, thank you for your support. Thank you for staying the course. Thank you for staying strong. Our students are having awesome experiences. It's shown in black and white in the data and proud of what we're able to continue during these most challenged times. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just had a comment regarding one of the charts. I think the positive responses demonstrate that the relationships that we always talk about, when you, this was in looking at how they rated their experience earlier and now. I think it really is about relationships, that teachers have developed all these new skills. Students have developed skills. And whether they're in-person or they're virtual, they are connected. And that is what makes a difference in how they feel about their school and about learning. So I think your data reflects that, and I appreciate it.
It's bad.
I mean, just to think about, as a former teacher, to think about everything that has to be done every day, it blows me away. And then as a parent, thinking about my own children learning in this way, I'm blown away by our children who are courageous little learners. And it's, it's just going to be more to come, more great things to come. And I'm going to knock on wood about all those possible things that we don't want to see. But we do realize that everybody is going to react differently to the second vaccine. And I appreciate that you're sensitive to that.
Sure. Yes, ma'am.
Yet you are still focused on, we're going to keep moving forward and educating our children. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Awesome kids, supportive community, and rock star staff getting it done day in and day out. And so I thank everyone for the part that they played to contribute to our overall success.
Right. And I'm sorry, you're right. It's not just the teachers that make every day because there are so many people that have stepped up in so many ways that make it possible for the teachers to focus on their teaching. So thank you to everybody who's employed and all the families that, just everybody is working together and coming together for these little folks here.
Yes, ma'am.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Looks like our next item is an instructional report, and we are starting with Goochlin Elementary. One of my favorite places to be.
Mine, too. And I have some friends with me today, so I would like to have a please come forward.
Could that be that beautiful team in red?
We planned this perfectly, didn't we?
Oh, goodness.
We have Ms. Steely, Ms. Pruszniewski, Ms. Pont, and Ms. Fisher. They work together, strong fifth-grade team, and they have a presentation for you from our customers. We've asked our customers how the pandemic has impacted them. And here you go, ladies, you're on.
All righty. Well, good evening, school board members. We are so honored to be here as the fifth-grade team. We really enjoy being a team together, so it's really fun to dress up as twinsies and come see you guys. But we really just want to thank you for all the support that you guys have given us this year. And honestly, this wasn't anything I wrote because it wasn't anything I expected to experience. But being here tonight and hearing your reflection on your partner who is not with us and hearing the way that our whole school board works with our administrative team and our teachers, it's just so special. And I thank you because of all the work that we do and that you support us with. But also, this feeling is what really drives the way that we're able to help students, too. So thank you for that. So, thank you for that. Also, did want to express the blessing of having Mr. Quarles with us and in our classrooms. His smile is what remains in our minds' eye, as you spoke of, as everyone spoke of. And his life of service will remind us to strive to be the leaders that our students deserve. So, thank you for that.
So, if you'll bear with us and do one more short video in just a minute, not quite yet, thank you. But our fifth graders were brave enough to get behind the camera for you. They wanted to express that while this has been a challenging year, and we've all had to adapt, they have done it with the most, with the bravest hearts, and we're just really, really proud of them.
And you guys have given us the tools that we needed when we were teaching virtually as the safest option. You've offered words of support and encouragement to us. You've supported us so much through funding and through your grants that has enhanced our students' learning. We wanted to, on behalf of all of GCPS, say thank you, especially for our most recent bonus. We very much appreciate that.
And we truly are humbled by your partnership and everything that you guys have done for us and how you all have worked together. And so, I guess without further ado, love to show you our kid posts.
What made you nervous about the start of the school year?
What made me nervous for the start of the school year was being newer virtual. It was scary and I didn't understand. That night, I was worried about virtual school because I didn't have a iPad.
And I had me, and my wife, like, cutting off the unmute thing when they're working, and no one could show their back person how.
Um, so, I thought about how virtual year, and I got a bit nervous as I thought. But soon after, it goes to excitement.
Mainly just the, um, just being like behind the screen, being virtual, because I am better when I picture it like here. So, like, um, that I didn't know anyone there, and that I would not make any friends, and that I had never used an iPad for school before.
Knowing what you know now, what advice would you give your fourth-grade selves?
I would tell myself that this is going to be a long, interesting year. There's going to be virtual school, and that's going to be an interesting experience that we'll never forget. There's going to be ups and downs, and stay positive, and we're all in this together.
It's all going to be okay, and we just have to pull through it together. And even though in a bad time, it's kind of like a fresh start of a new school and new friends and teachers.
Don't take so many things for granted, because they might like be gone soon. Think the challenges ahead not quite enter my best, looking forward into my future instead of stopping now.
How have you adapted to the changes in your classroom this year?
So, in math, I could be able to play game kits with each other. Like, I'm like, I've gotten better at math and studying it, and using the iPad and the different type of apps to help me learn as well.
You can work on Google Meet, or you could stay six feet.
Well, we've made it work by using skate rooms in math. And at recess, we do social distance, like passing the stuff.
You have to use our iPad for everything. And I've gotten better at using the app, and I also taught my teacher how to use gift cards.
How has this challenging experience prepared you for your future?
To think good about myself and don't doubt myself. Tell me that you underestimate what you have until you lose it.
You have to sit down and say, "I have a growth mindset." You have to be able to stay together in these.
And learn that learning needs to grow, and it's okay to ask for this. This will teach us that when you think something's going to be bad, just think that everything's going to be good.
Something will stop getting hard, just push through.
Change happens, you need to be calm, everything's going to be okay.
I'm ready for middle school, so bring it on.
Our fifth graders have shined a light on this unique school year.
Thank you for supporting our teachers! Thank you for teaching us! Thank you for bringing us back in person!
Thank you, guys.
I believe I just heard "I can."
That was awesome, wasn't it awesome? Thank you, fifth-grade team. You're amazing.
Wow. Is it just me, or do you guys all see that these kids, as different as they are, all the love and the connections that they're making with each other, even six feet apart? Wow, powerful, thank you.
And board members, it's the culture that is embedded in this school division. And culture doesn't change, culture lasts. And there's a strong culture in this school division based on cooperation, our core values. And, you know, as I'm just watching today, you see the images in our classrooms, and they're different. Look at the posters that were behind some of the students with, and it embraces who we are as a community. It's diverse. There are positive things happening in our school division that's not related to reading, writing, and arithmetic. There is great work that's happening as we develop these young men and women into the future leaders in our communities. And we truly are inspiring the next generation. And it's more than just learning how to read and write. It's the lessons that they're learning, day in and day out, on the playground, in the classroom, on the bus. And so, tonight's been a very positive night to recognize the work of this school division. And I hope that you take pride in the part that you're playing in that, because I tell you, board members, great things are happening in our school division every day, and you're getting a glimpse into that this evening. So, another positive is the work that we're doing related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. You drew the line in the sand in June, when you established a resolution and you approved a strategic plan, followed by equity goals just a few short months later. And so, these are goals that you have adopted, that you believe in, and work that has happened daily in our school division. And so, we want to provide you with an update on the work our school division is doing directly aligned with your equity goals. And I'd like Dr. Fowler to come forward and give us an update.
I always have to go like right after the really cute elementary slide. I have no videos. But I do want to join everyone in thanking you all for your tireless work for our community and for our children. I'm not sure how you have this set up, but okay. I have the notes, I just need to be able to clip first. Spoiler alert. Okay, good evening, board members. As you know, Goochlin County Public Schools is committed to the process of reaching equity for our students, our faculties, and our families. This commitment was underscored again this evening with the amendments to board policies where you have aligned our local definition of equity to that of the Virginia Department of Education. We, along with VDOE, believe that through our deliberate efforts, we can eliminate the predictability of student outcomes based on such things as race, gender, zip code, ability or disability, socioeconomic status, or home language. This stance is echoed in everything that we do, in every decision that we make, in our very mission of maximizing the potential of every learner. Furthermore, our commitment to equity is one that we commit to annually, recommit to annually, through school board goals focused on this very path. This year, as you'll no doubt remember, the board adopted three goals related to equity. And it's my pleasure tonight to update you and the community on just a few of the initiatives and strides that are taking place towards accomplishing each of them, as well as giving a glimpse into where we are headed from here. The first division-wide equity goal for this year was to create a welcoming and inclusive environment that fosters a sense of belonging and safety for all students. The selection of this goal started with a really simple realization that belonging and safety must precede any sort of meaningful interaction and growth. We took a good, long, hard look at our schools, at the images on the walls and the books on the shelves. We committed to make GCPS a place where students, families, and staff members don't just find themselves like a location on the map, but where they truly believe they belong as an integral part, someone that is valued. This theme of "You Belong Here" has become pervasive this year throughout our schools. Every member of the GCPS staff received a T-shirt celebrating this theme as a kickoff early in the fall, and as a physical reminder that they wear throughout the year that we are one inclusive team that welcomes every person. Continuing this common mantra, on October 2nd, we celebrated our first-ever "You Belong Here" Division-wide Day. A focus on this goal has also resulted in changes to our physical school environments, the look of our classrooms, the books that we share, the bulletin boards on our walls. They're all chosen with an eye to inclusion and diversity. From there, the drive within our staff to create an inclusive experience where everyone feels represented has only grown. As an example, at the elementary level, teachers have begun collaborating to compile a list of books that can diversify their classroom libraries in a number of ways. These range from representing a variety of races and ethnicities and cultures and languages, to including characters of different family structures and abilities. An exciting new curriculum project is also underway at the elementary level. A project that we are referring to as the Windows and Mirrors Literature Project. The basis of this project is that literature is a way that we, as readers, make connections and see reflections of ourselves and of our own humanity. It is in these ways that it functions as a mirror reflecting back at us. We know that students feel valued and important when they see themselves mirrored in their curriculum. But literature can also be a window. It can give insights into the experiences and realities of others, and help us to learn about the greater world and human experiences beyond our own. Toggling between these two perspectives of ourself and of others helps us all to broaden our worldview, connect with others, and to grow empathy. Thus, a group of dedicated pre-K through fifth-grade teachers have set out to diversify the narrative that our students are exposed to through their literature. Going merely beyond creating a database of diverse literature, these teachers are selecting six picture books this year and creating a unique Goochlin County Public Schools curriculum to accompany each. This pre-K through fifth-grade curriculum will be firmly grounded in the SOLs, in the profile of a Goochlin graduate, and in our strategic plan. And it will assist teachers who may be unaware of where, really, to begin the complicated conversations on diversity and inclusion in their own professional development. It'll provide a framework of activities for them organized around the common theme of literature as windows and mirrors. These activities will call upon students to conduct close reads to identify in ways in which they connect as a mirror to the text, building greater understanding of self and of others. This framing of literature in this way will continue with students into their middle school years at Goochlin Schools as well, where they will encounter a newly adopted literature series entitled "Windows and Mirrors." Certainly, equity and representation were a consideration in selecting that new middle school text series, and that should always be a consideration in major curriculum purchases. Towards that end, the instructional team has recently created a comprehensive evaluative rubric to be used in the review process for a major curriculum adoption. And the rubric intentionally weaves equity and presence of diverse representations throughout it. Also in alignment with our equity goal, number one, of creating an inclusive, welcoming environment where all feel a sense of belonging, GCPS is, of course, honoring February again as Black History Month. The wording on this image of honoring is intentional. We are not celebrating. Celebrations by definition are short-lived. They happen perhaps annually, perhaps less often than that. Instead, while we honor Black History Month in February, we recognize that Black history is a part of American history year-round. Additional curriculum work is underway at both the elementary and the secondary levels to coordinate with the social studies curriculum edits that recently were approved by the Virginia Department of Education that will share a fuller picture of the contributions of various cultures to our great country and our world. While this picture will be a part of the year-round, universal social studies experience in Goochlin Schools, we're also thrilled to be offering the students at the high school an elective course next year focused exclusively on the contributions of African-Americans in history. The proposed African-American history course will be offered at both the standard and honors level in an effort to appeal to a full academic spectrum of students. Thus, we can see how this simple goal of creating an environment of belonging and one that values diversity has taken root and continues to grow throughout our schools. And that's just goal one, everybody. Our schools are great, our faculties are great. And I want to be clear that I am reporting on the great work that they are doing here. The division's second equity goal this year was to engage in ongoing education of our workforce on inclusion, equity, relationship building, and cultural proficiency to assist faculties in examining implicit bias and microaggressions in the daily experience of our students. A division-level equity team was trained virtually over four half-day sessions in July and August on these very topics by the Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities as part of our three-year partnership with them. From those trainings, each school developed its own school-level equity team in each of the five schools. The charge of those committees is to focus on the equity needs of the individual school communities. Each team receives coaching and guidance from VCIC throughout the year, and they each have two scheduled professional development sessions that are tailored to the individual needs of that school community. Topics covered this year or planned to be covered in our schools have included fostering a sense of belonging, identifying implicit bias, practicing culturally responsive pedagogy, and role-playing difficult situations that may occur in the classrooms. Furthermore, as you know, each school has set an equity goal as a part of their school improvement plan. This important step ensures an ongoing emphasis on equity and on measuring our progress. While these equity team meetings and professional developments have been vital to our professional growth, I'm happy to share that, just like in the case of the environmental goal, goal number two has continued to take root and grow even beyond what we could have foreseen back in the summer when it was selected. Conversations soon extended beyond planned professional development opportunities. Our Goochlin staff has proven that they are hungry for more knowledge in these areas and to hone their skills related to identifying implicit bias in themselves and their curriculums. The curriculum efforts already addressed this evening are a testament to that. But so are a wealth of other actions on the part of our workforce. Professional learning communities have sprung up, both officially and unofficially in schools. As an example, at the secondary complex, English and Social Studies teachers are reading shared texts, such as the student remixed version of "Stamped From the Beginning." shared texts such as the student remixed version of "Stamped from the Beginning," and "The Guide for White Women Who Teach Black Boys," and they're engaging in regular meetings to discuss with colleagues. Across schools, a schoology group for staff members has also been formed that is called Equity Allies. Here, staff from pre-kindergarten all the way through 12th grade can build community and share resources around issues of access, relationship building, and equity. A plethora of professional development opportunities are promoted and shared here regularly. Students, too, have wanted to get in on this positive momentum that they've been seeing from their teachers. They care about the experience of others within their school. At Goochlin High School, the Bulldog Advisory Committee for Equity and Education, or BASE, has been formed as an offshoot of our own Advisory Committee for Equity and Education, or ACE. Co-sponsored by two faculty members, Mary Paige David and Bo Winbush, this dedicated group of students from diverse backgrounds has a drive to learn about the everyday experience of students within Goochlin High School and to make it better. Many of them were invited to participate in Diversity Dialogue Day in December, an event sponsored by the Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities, that allowed them to learn more about the same issues of belonging and implicit bias that their teachers had been receiving training in. Afterwards, the group created and delivered a survey that was completed by over 500 Goochlin High School students to gather information on such important topics as feelings of inclusion and being cared for. They then used this data to start tough conversations with the greater community. Following the examples of their teachers and administrators, BASE jumped into the tough conversations that the data they collected illuminated, and they hosted the first-ever diversity forum for Goochlin. Here, students embrace the discomfort that is needed to help people grow and to change things for the better. This well-organized event, which took place last Tuesday night, and Mr. Quarles was in attendance, it was the last activity that I was able to share with him, and so I have a special place in my heart for this, for sure. This event featured student-led discussions in breakout rooms where they engaged with other students, staff, parents, and community leaders. It was one of the strongest examples of excellence, courage, and optimism that I have personally seen in 25 years as an educator. These students are undoubtedly to be applauded for their efforts, which represent another aspect of how Goal Number Two, Continuous Education, has continued to take root. The last of our three equity goals this year was focused on increasing the availability of minority role models. The research is clear on the positive benefits of role models of color for all students. In fact, positive interactions with people of various backgrounds can be a protective factor against forming erroneous implicit biases. An interest form has been circulated around the community through various organizations, social media postings, connections with employment resource groups for large corporations, all in order to generate a database of professionals of diverse backgrounds who are willing to volunteer in a number of ways within our schools. Admittedly, COVID has limited a great number of those in-person volunteering and mentoring opportunities this year. Beyond crowdsourcing for mentors, however, GCPS is making a concerted effort as we enter the recruitment phase of the year to attract strong minority candidates to our workforce. Through a collaboration with Longwood University, Dr. Raely and Dr. Armstrong, we're recently able to host a group of "Misters" onsite. The Call Me Mister program is specifically designed for African-American male college students preparing for career and education. By building a relationship with these gentlemen and showing them the beauty of Goochlin County and of our schools early, we aim to attract them to our county before other school divisions are even a consideration. Whether it's for their student teaching or long fruitful professional career beyond, we're looking to support and welcome these qualified young teachers early onto our ranks. Recruitment is only one piece of the puzzle, however. Attracting professionals of color, step one. Retaining them and keeping them happy, like Ms. Blighan is in this picture, I love it, is another step altogether. Certainly, competitive salaries and fantastic benefits that you are able to put together and provide for our employees go a long way towards this goal. But just as with students, we know that the adults in our buildings need to feel a strong sense of belonging and that they are valued in order to flourish and to stay. Dr. Armstrong and Ms. Demetra Harris have made great efforts in fostering a sense of community even beyond individual buildings, to bring our teachers of color together, to bond, yes, to form community, yes, but also to share concerns that can later be addressed so that we can continue to grow their satisfaction with their experience. And with that update on our current equity goals, we're ready to look down the road a little bit as well to an anticipated timeline into the future. By the end of the semester, we plan to not only fully implement the rubric for major curriculum purchases, complete with its interwoven themes of equity, but to have also developed an equity checklist that can be attached as a cover sheet to all policies upon their first reading to ensure that the equity lens is ever-present and applied. Over the summer, we hope to complete an equity audit that will be published in the fall and bring greater transparency to a number of data points related to representations of various groups in areas such as gifted, advanced programs, discipline, diploma attainment, and post-secondary goals. In the 2021-22 school year, we hope to collaborate with a third party, perhaps a university partner, to complete a community engagement study focused on the results of that equity audit and focused on improving the areas that are highlighted as inequities. The audit and the community engagement work anticipated will pave the road ahead for school board goals, equity goals, for years to come and help us travel the path towards achieving true equity. Questions? That's a lot.
Wow.
That's just some of it. It was hard to narrow it down. There are great things happening in our schools, obviously.
Well, first thing that comes to my mind is, we were talking about legislation earlier. We don't need the General Assembly to tell us to be culturally competent. We don't need the General Assembly to tell us that this is something we need to evaluate our teachers on. Thank you so much for your work and the work of the entire school community to make this a priority and just what we do. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Powerful. And the BASE evening, it was hard to tell, those are students?
Exactly.
Or are they the primeups? I mean, they did such a fantastic job of leading those breakout sessions and talking. They talked to us on an adult level. You know, they were leading some interesting conversations and challenging conversations. So, amazing.
Absolutely. And to Dr. Raely's earlier point, we are not just changing the experience for our students, we're changing our community and our world through their experiences and giving them opportunities like that. So, thank you for allowing us to do that.
Thank you so much.
Board members, what's happening here is sustainable change. This, at the pace that we're doing this, the approach that we're taking, and it's an inside-out approach, where this is going to have long-lasting impact in the lives of students, our staff, and this community as a result of the efforts that we're putting forth right now. We will look back with pride five, 10 years from now and remember when we did this and how it's changed the face of this school division for the better for many, many years to come.
Wow. Thank you.
Great work. Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you, goodness. Thank you so much. Wow. All right. Let's see. We are now, goodness, I'm just like blown away by all these great presentations tonight. All right, I think we are on number 17, Information Items, Randolph Elementary School and Secondary Complex Digital Marquee.
Board members, just wanted to share this as a matter of information and let you know the work that is happening by staff to accomplish these projects. The Randolph Elementary School marquee was taken down when we completed our new paving project over the course of the summer, and so that is the last remaining portion of that project. It is stubbed out with electricity. We have a vision for what we want to accomplish there, and you can see in your packet what that initial vision is. And so, wanted to at least get this in front of your eyes first, as we are now in the process of working with the county on a conditional use permit and getting the bids so that we can do this work. This is funded with our capital improvement budget and the remaining funds from that project, and anticipate that we can have this finished by the end of June. In addition to that, a project that I've wanted to accomplish for some time is to have the new marquee out in front of our high school and our middle school. It is highly trafficked, as you know, and a lot of folks pass by there, and so it's a great way for us ultimately to fulfill our strategic mission of engaging our stakeholders in the work of the school division. Just think of the folks who are passing by and how we can provide some messages to let folks know what's happening. They may not read a schoology post, they may not pick up the phone when they get a phone call, but you know what? They'll see what is happening at that school when they're driving by Route 6. So, it's a great way to engage our community. And again, we're working with the county on that process. This is funded by turnback funds from last fiscal year. You already authorized that earlier this year, and so we're just working through the process now. And just wanted to keep you informed on where we are, and then ultimately, as we are making progress on this project, we'll give you another update, but just wanted to pause for a moment and let you know the status of this work.
Any questions, board members?
It's very exciting. I'll say that.
Yeah, it looks good.
So, the RES sign is basically one-sided, and that's mostly due to the location of the school and how traffic flows. The high school marquee will be, like, right now, it's kind of angled, but if it's angled, you wouldn't really see the back of it. So, will it be turned more so if you're driving either direction, you'll be able to read it clearly?
Yeah, the secondary complex marquee is owned by the middle school on one side, the high school on the other side. So, if you're going west, you're going to see what's happening at the middle school. You're coming east, you're going to see what's happening at the high school. And so, yeah, the configuration is not going to change. We're just going to substitute those plastic letters for some nice digital signage. The Randolph one is not going to be on Cardwell Road, it's inside the parking lot just a little bit. So, that's why it's one side. You have to actually go into the parking lot to see what is happening there, and so just a different geographical location impacts the design.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That's probably a better idea because of vandalism and all of just sitting out further.
As an aside, I will share, if you drive by Route 6, there's also a faded state champion sign. This is not a part of this project, but anyway, I've been working with Coach Fowler to see what we can do to get that rejuvenated, and I think we have to get a whole new aluminum sign. It's kind of embedded into the brick there, but he is working on that so that we can have this new marquee rejuvenated state champion sign that might be a little bit easier for everybody to see as well.
And that sign has multiple state championships on it. Am I remembering correctly?
Yes, sir.
Awesome.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, our next item on the agenda is an action item. With all due respect to those who have served and will serve the students of Goochlin County Public Schools, as a member of this board, the resolution presented for approval this evening is necessary in order that the process set forth in Virginia Code 24.2-226, election to fill a vacancy can begin. Members of the board, is there a motion to approve the resolution of the petition for writ of election?
Madam Chair, so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
No.
Okay, thank you. I'll call for the question. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, say no. Thank you. The motion is passed, and the resolution will begin the process of filling the vacancy. All right. Now, we are to 19 items for the board, Strategic and Tactical Plan Report. Dr. Raely, do you have anything to report on that?
No, ma'am. Just want to thank the staff who put that together, and so it's just another artifact of the work of our school division, a lot of details associated with specifics, things that are happening in classroom, the professional development that's taking place in the school division, and some other announcements, and just would encourage our community to read that and have an understanding of what is happening at the grassroots level in our school division.
Thank you. It's good reading. And our board members, any questions or anything you'd like to share on that? All right. Item B, Attendance and Enrollment Date Update. Dr. Raely, anything on that?
Yeah, we have strong attendance data, board members, and it's better attendance than we had this time last year. And so, what we're having the conversation about as staff now is the difference between attendance and engagement. And you may be in attendance, but are you really engaged? And so, in the distance learning environment, that may be happening. And so, how can we understand what is happening in the lives of students and how can we get them to be engaged while they are attending? And that's the challenge that faces us now in the next couple of months, but we're poisoned and ready to attack that. But overall, we have students who are attending, and so our numbers are strong right now.
Great. Thank you, sir. All right. We are at Committee and Board Reports. I will say that Gift Advisory Committee and STEM Committee, I would like if Dr. Geier or Dr. Raely would inform us of those so that we can make sure that there's a board member in attendance. Would be glad to do that. So, Dr. Geier, would you like to start us off?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, we have not had a Reynolds College Board meeting since our last meeting, so I don't have anything to report.
Thank you. And Dr. Armstrong?
We had a great facilities and safety committee meeting last week and got a lot of great feedback from several members of our community, including Mr. Hamsley, Dr. Karchman, and Dr. Turner about our ideas around solar install moving forward. I will take some of that and put that into more formalized communication with the board soon to hopefully guide our next steps for the solar installation.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Newman?
I will just underscore what Dr. Armstrong has just said. That was an excellent meeting, a large participation and discussion, and a presentation on solar power as renewable energy and its potential for us. So, it was excellent. Dr. Armstrong?
All right, thank you. Mr. Wright?
Madam Chair, the Maggie Walker School Board met, I believe, two days after our last official, you know, full meeting of the board. I was indeed elected as chair there. We have a vice chair, but I think the real takeaway there is that they've got an eye at this point in returning to in-person classes at March 15th. There was a little calculus behind that date. Essentially, what they were trying to do was to allow a 10-day period after their last teacher had been vaccinated that cared to do so. They've had some significant issues with, trying to find the right way to say this, with some of their staff's belief in the school's ability to provide a safe environment, and that has prevented them until this point from really being able to return. There was also some logistical issues with transportation and things like that. Those seem to be more secondary than the staff. But now, with the vaccines already beginning to roll through their staff, it seems to have changed everybody's opinions about what they can pull off, and so they'll be going back March 15th. There's going to be, you know, probably some adjustment for them. They don't have the benefit of all of the things that we've done, and I think the various different school divisions have all had different experiences. So, honestly, I think it'll be kind of a little bit of a rough transition back in, but I think probably by about the time they get to April 1, everything is going to be okay. And they're seeing some very strong interest amongst their student body in actually returning in person. Something like 70% are saying they'll return in person, 68.9, 70, somewhere in there.
Well, I know that board will benefit from your leadership, so thank you for taking that on.
Sure.
Mrs. Barefoot Reed?
Madam Chairman, I have nothing to report.
All right, thank you. Before I begin my board comments, just thank you, Mr. Kattakatea, for doing... Before I begin my board comments, just thank you, Mr. Katakatea, for doing two jobs tonight, and we really appreciate you being here and just keeping us all moving and, and getting this meeting going. So, thank you so much. On January 25th, ACE met virtually. Dr. Fowler and Dr. Armstrong shared some important information regarding minority recruiting and minority, that in the mentors and staff. Bylaws were discussed, and Dr. Rayly also discussed the need to reach out to and include more minority groups, such as our Latinx community members. So, I hope that we will get a more diverse group. And just, again, kudos to the BASE group and their great work that they are doing, and that was just an amazing event, and I'm so appreciative of those students taking their time in this crazy year to really work to make our community better. Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School met on February the 3rd, and this was their reorganization meeting, so a new board chair was elected, or, yes. And topics that were discussed were some of the withdrawal numbers from the program, so that's certainly concerning. It's not that much different than most years because it is a challenging program, but it is definitely something that everyone is paying attention to, and the, the staff of Blue Ridge do great work in supporting the students. And so, from this comes the opportunity that there are 20 slots in a single, that, what was approved was any division that wishes to open up to 20 slots in a single class for the class of 2025 is given approval to do so. So, there's opportunity there for other students. New courses were approved that can be one high school credit as an elective or one that meets the Blue Ridge requirement, and Goochlin's local elective of African-American History Honors was also approved as an elective course for Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School. The budget was discussed. House bills discussed looking more like guidance for diversifying governor's schools, outreach practices, admissions policies, and guidelines on diversity, equity, inclusion training that mandates at this time. So, as Mr. Wright probably is following that same House bill, it's good to see that it is more guidance and leaving that important work to these great governor's schools that we have. Next Blue Ridge meeting will be May the 5th, and I believe that is all. Dr. Fowler, did we settle on a date for the next ACE meeting? Are we still working on that?
We're still working. I haven't heard back from Mr. Allen, but I did ask that it be changed from the 22nd, so it will be a different date.
So, pay attention, if you're on ACE or if you're interested in being a part of ACE, please check with, you check with Dr. Rayly? And we would love to have you. All right. Dr. Rayly, did you have anything?
Nothing new to report, Ms. Horn. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone, for taking your time to be in, to represent the board at these committees. Our next item is new business. Is there any new business? Anything? All right. Well, seeing no further business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, so moved. So moved.
I second.
All right. It has been moved and second that we adjourn this meeting. Our next meeting is Monday, February 22nd in this room, and this evening's meeting, oh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, oh my goodness, nobody. All right. So, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.